Welcome to the Maitland City Council meeting of June 23, 2025. Please cover your devices. And if you have any, we already collected a few speakers' cards. If anybody would like to speak to the fellow committees, it helps us to have a card beforehand, so we can spell your name, et cetera. Let's start off this evening as we always do with a brief moment of silence. Please join me. Okay, and now those who are able to be free to stand and join me, the blood relieved. Like blood deleted.
Blood of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as odd as this may sound, let's recess this meeting. And we will convene ourselves as the community redevelopment, community redevelopment agency. And we have some brief business to take care of before going back into our city council meetings. Let's see, does anybody on the CRA have any items they would pull from consent agenda? All right, saying none, does anybody from the public have any comments on consent agenda item number two of the CRA? Okay, and with no public comments, a motion would be in order.
I'll move to approve consent agendas presented for the CRA.
Okay, remember.
One second.
And second, Lauren, please call it.
Member Shani?
Aye.
Member French? Member Randall?
Aye.
Chair Lannan?
Aye. Okay, we've done, so the agenda of the CRA, and now let us dismiss the CRA for the evening and reconvene as the city council. We are back in session with the city council. I think the first order of business this evening is a presentation on the downtown multimodal transportation study. Mark, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, just real briefly, I think as you all know, about almost three years ago, we embarked on a study partnering with DOT, the NPO in Orange County, regarding our downtown area. We did a, we started a small area study. It was led by Department of Transportation. After about a year and a half gathering data, providing, I think actually a good bit of data, the department presented their final findings. Those findings didn't meet the intent of what the city council was looking for, nor the scope of services that we originally discussed for that. So we had about six months of discussion back and forth with DOT on how to proceed with that. As part of those discussions, the leadership at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Metro Plan, was involved with those and saw the shortcomings of that study. Since we have a really good relationship with the NPO, we had an offer from the NPO to sort of take up that study where DOT left off and carry it to its logical end, to provide us the mobility options that we're looking for in the downtown area. So we've been talking with the NPO, their consulting team at HDR about those next steps. This is a contract that the NPO has with one of their subcontractors, which we're a partnering agency here. So what they're going to be doing over the next year, year and a half, is picking up the study where DOT left off, provide us the information that we need to actually make cap, to be able to plan capital projects for the downtown area, for the use of the CRA money that we have available to us, to grow mobility in downtown area. So tonight is sort of the kickoff of that. We have the HDR team here to present to go over a little of the scope of services and schedule and what expectations are. Then the handoff will take place to our ad hoc committee for this mobility plan. They will act as steering committee and take care of the process with recommendations ultimately coming back to you as a city council for adoption. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Melissa Pecaro from HDR, who will be walking us through where we are right now. So get that presentation up. It was right there.
That was the second one.
The second tab over.
About that one?
Nope, all the way to the top.
Yes.
Thank you, council, for having us today. My name is Melissa Pecaro, I'm a transportation planner at HDR, again, serving as consultants with Metro Plan Orlando in partnership with the city of Maitland. Mark, you gave a great introduction, thank you. I think you got like half my slides.
Nope, sorry.
No, no, wonderful. So yes, this will be the kickoff presentation for the Maitland multimodal study. So our agenda today is pretty short. We're going to be going over the study introduction, talking about the mobility conditions, so the existing area, looking at the multimodal vision, talking about the potential corridor intersection concept developments that will be starting later on in the summer, as well as the public participation plan that we have in development, then going over the schedule and next steps. So the purpose of this study is to essentially improve the safety, comfort, and efficiency of the transportation network within this study area, focusing on Maitland Avenue and its intersection connections, also including connections with transit and a focus on its vulnerable users. If you remember from the Metro Plan Orlando City of Maitland Vision Zero Action Plan project, vulnerable users being anybody outside of a motor vehicle. And again, the overall goal of this study is to create actionable CIP projects that can be easy for the city and its partners to implement. So going into the background again a little bit, I won't harp on this too much since Mark did a very great job, but this is a partnership study with Metro Plan Orlando and the city of Maitland, and then going over the, what was done previously in the FDOT Maitland area-wide study in 2023, but also making some references to the old study in 2003, knowing where it came from and how we've moved forward. So in addition to those two studies, we're looking at a lot of your local policies and plans as well, seeing what you've already adopted or approved, making sure that's encompassed within whatever we decide to move forward with. So we'll be looking at your Vision Zero action plans, both the city one and the region one, as well as looking at specific Metro Plan Orlando documents and Orange County documents, such as the comprehensive plan. So with that, we wanted to showcase the Vision Zero High Injury Network. If you remember from the study, the high injury network was developed through a five-year analysis period of signal four analytics data to show where the most deadly and serious injury crashes occurred. We thought this was relevant to bring up upfront because a lot of this initial work of safety was done already, and we want to make sure it's also encompassed with this project. We took a look at the bicycle facilities within the study area, not only the FDOT bicycle network, but the city of Maitland identified bicycle network for your bicycle and pedestrian master plan, making sure that those local network connections and the already established area was identified. We took a look at crashes within the study area so far. You'll notice that Maitland Avenue and Horatio Avenue have the highest crash concentration within the study area, but Maitland Boulevard itself has the highest crash concentration in general. We thought that this was important to note while outside of our specific study scope, we're hoping that whatever transportation improvements we decide to present to you all later on are improvements that will help to alleviate these crashes at both intersections, as well as continue to keep it safe from those deadly and serious injuries as well. We took a look at the speed limits within the area, noting that Maitland Avenue is 35 miles per hour. This is relevant because when looking at the Florida Department of Transportation Design Guidelines and looking at the context classification of the area, so that's C4 urban residential type network, it gives us a lot of opportunities and a lot of transportation improvement options that we can consider moving forward into this study. So our team went on our first field visit to the area earlier in May. With the map on the right, you'll see that this was data that we had collected through our Arc Online GIS map. Primarily, we focused on ADA accessible areas or lack thereof drainage, roadway, sidewalks, and bicycle facilities, and then areas for utilities, because utility areas and partnership projects with your utility companies are also something that we will look at in the future. So we took a lot of photos and again, some outside of the study area, but we wanted to have the most comprehensive view of Maitland Avenue that your residents get to enjoy every day. So throughout this project, a vision statement, goals, and objectives were developed, looking to improve the connectivity of the area, leverage cost-effective transportation improvements, again, making sure that there's something that the city can work through, through their CIP or with those local partners, advancing wave finding. We know that the city already has some really great wave finding, but continuing that moving forward, increasing the safety, and then enhancing the aesthetics of the area. So going into the corridor and intersection concepts portion of the study, this will be one of the bigger portions of the study moving forward. There's a few different components that we'll be looking at, specifically the one you see on the slide, and this is an example of our opportunity mapping. So this is where we'll develop some high-level maps and show where there's potential to have that variety of opportunities of improvements. So it could be anything from ranging what you see on the slide here, or some that we may not move forward with at all, but it's just to give that visual understanding of what the area could look like, as well as an improvement matrix, so comparing the pros and cons of each type of improvement, and then having those actual aerial level concept developments. This is an example slide again, with some visuals of that toolbox of improvements that we can include. Some of the examples are street trees, which we know the Maitland area has some really great landscape opportunities, as well as some already existing really great landscaping. There's potential for possibly bulb-outs, raised medians, mid-block crossings, and then pedestrian crosswalks, including rectangular rounded flashing beacons or pedestrian hybrid beacons, which have become more prominent throughout the central Florida area. And again, these are just examples. As we continue the study, you may determine that they're all relevant or none of them are relevant. So this slide is an example of a roadway intersection that was very similar to the Maitland Avenue area. This was SR Away at Daytona Beach. The posted speed limit was also 35 miles an hour, again, like Maitland Avenue. And this one encompasses a variety of different options. You can see nine different ones in total, just on the slide here, but really focusing on having those pedestrian connections with the raised intersections, the mid-block crossings, raising things off the grade level from cars, and focusing on that safety aspect as well. So continuing with some of our other efforts for this part of the study, we'll work on developing role plots and visualizations, again, to help the residents and you all understand better what we're trying to achieve with this study. We'll develop an opinion of probable cost. That way, whatever improvements that we work through with our partners, you'll have an idea of what to expect potentially moving forward, and any kind of documentation. So we're looking at having a total of one role plot, two intersection concepts, two visualizations, and then these are just some examples of some high-level visualizations that we're hoping to achieve later on. For the public participation, we are also developing a public participation plan. We're hoping to have that done within the next few weeks to help streamline what engagement we want to get from the public. The city of Maitland already has some really great public opportunity events that we're hoping to pop up at, which was something also done within the Vision Zero study. You have the First Friday Events, Get Down Downtown, I believe it's called, as well as a lot of great holiday events. So we want to be able to meet residents where they're already going to be at. We want to make it comfortable for them to be able to give their feedback and let us know the issues going on in the area. We noticed that the people in the area do have a lot of opinions about the transportation network. When we went on our first field visit, they were very eager to come talk to us, really great. They're like, are you with the city? And we're like, no, but we're working with them. What's going on? So we know that there's, we saw a lot of people on bikes, walking their dogs, people in work uniforms. So there's a really great pedestrian network already who want to use the area, so really capitalizing on that, as well as for those who we may not be able to reach in person, developing online tools and surveys for continued feedback collection. So this is just a high-level study schedule. Again, this is probably going to be going on for another year, year and a half into the summer of next year when the study will be completed. Just looking at having that public involvement begin in the summer of this year, and then we'll present to you again the final developed plan in the spring of next year. So the next steps, again, will be finalizing that public participation plan, nailing down on events we want to go to, as well as finalizing the policy and plan reviews, making sure we're capturing all of what the city of Maitland wants to bring forward. And then we have our ad hoc committee meeting this Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM. So we will be back here again, presenting this information, a little more higher detail to them, and seeing what we want to move forward with. So that is all we have for you right now, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If present. Well, we really appreciate Metro Plan, and we all are consultants for Metro Plan, but we do really appreciate Metro Plan stepping up and helping us out with this study, as I said, needing some help. Relay that back to us later. So on Wednesday, your meeting, kickoff meeting with our ad hoc?
Yes.
Presenting?
Yep.
And you'll give, I guess, this presentation more or less, or is it?
We're like, we're like, to meet on the bones with it, since we're different regions, since they're all transportation professionals that will probably want to meet on the bones.
Are you saying we can't?
I don't believe what you're gonna say. Absolutely not, but you guys know who you put on the, on the ad hoc committee, so.
Right, yes, and we may have, just in case, just to be edified. All right, well, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
And for seeing you all on Wednesday.
We're sharing the questions only for the council?
This is just a presentation for the council, but they're coming back to have a meeting.
I just wondered if she asked if there are any questions.
Just for the council. But I'm sure they'd be happy to answer your questions Wednesday at the meeting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure. All right. All right, we're into old business. Mark, is there any old business?
No, sir, just as a reminder, somewhat of a reminder, I have some input after the last council meeting from some members of the public that couldn't hear the city council speaking, so when you speak, remember to turn your mic on and lean in a little bit so everybody can hear you.
Okay, I'll get my closer. Okay, thank you. All right, now we have the consent agenda for the city council. Does anybody on the council wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay, does anyone from the public have any comment on consent agenda items two through seven?
I think I do, but I would prefer to hear the, you know, the information about the density and those kinds of things.
Okay, well, I think that's, I think, well, this is the consent agenda, I'm not sure that any, if you're thinking about items for ad hoc or boards or?
No, I'm talking about, it says currently, the only way to obtain an excellent residential density in 40 units per acre, and 60, 70 units per acre.
Okay, I think you're talking about?
To obtain it for a simple, or three acres of contiguous land, in comparison, so I'm trying to.
I think, sir, you're looking at the decision we're going to come to for the other decisions in the first reading, I'm sorry, first reading and transmittal of the CDP, is that correct, Mark? So we're not quite there yet, but we'll get there.
But there'll be a time for the public to speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so consent agenda items two through seven, any other comments? All right, we will bring it back to the council. Since there's no comment, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agendas.
Okay, a motion.
I'll send.
Oh, there's a second. All right, Lauren, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Shani?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Mayor Lannan?
Aye. Okay, so we have adopted the consent agenda. Now is the time for the public period, where anybody from the public can come and address the council or the community on any items that they would to address. Oh, well, yes, we have speakers, so we're in a call. Dorin and Al.
Thank you for letting us speak yet again. Our understanding and purpose of the city leadership is to serve the community. I like to quote the city's mission, "to provide the level of service necessary to maintain the excellent quality of life that is enjoyed by our citizens, business partners, and visitors, and to be a community for life." Despite countless emails, voicemails, text messages, there's been no meaningful response from the city to try and understand and pick a ball community and address fair rules and safety. For those who missed our previous meeting, a quick snapshot here, the city hired a court monitor that would check us, check in individuals at the court entrance during our
monitor that would check us, check in individuals at the court entrance during our reserved court times. Monitoring took place over four weeks. The court monitor allowed individuals to enter and join our games without checking with us first because we always were welcoming the players. Monitoring was the one permitting their entry. The monitor was the one permitting the entry. It gave us the impression that this was okay for those individuals to play with us, yet the city later claimed we violated the rules despite their own staff facilitating the situation. I won't go into every detail here, but I invite anybody to reach out to us if they'd like to learn more about the other allegations. After four weeks of silent monitoring from the city with no warning, no conversation, no attempt at a resolution, the city imposed a suspension. Not for a week, not for two weeks, not for three weeks, not even a month, but six months. We have been suspended from playing at city courts under the membership. That's not reasonable. It's punitive. Since then, 17 violations have been reported to the city across nine separate dates, yet no single suspension has been issued from those. And no place since our suspension, no court monitor has been stationed at the entrance any longer. We were told by other players, you guys are wrong and so are the monitors. About the suspension, that was just to highlight the absurdity of it. At this point, we're not here to challenge the suspension. The city has succeeded in imposing punishment without due process. Thankfully, we've found nearby communities that truly welcome all pickleball players without confusing and inconsistent rules that Maitland hastily put in place. In fact, a Maitland parks director with extensive pickleball experience told us we would never treat a player nonetheless a resident the way that you two have been treated. Why are we here? We're here on principle to pursue three things, reasonable and fair policies. With that petition that we've had sent out, and we have over 80 signatures that are in support of this, we do ask for consistency in enforcement. In an email dated June 12th to me from Jay, the parks director, he stated it would not be feasible or cost effective to assign staff to onsite at all locations to monitor the city policies that are followed consistently. That statement alone is why 18 other central Florida municipalities have embraced open play for the majority of court time. The other reason we're here, we would like the city to respond when it comes to concerns that are raised. In addition, legitimate safety concerns remain unaddressed that we brought to attention since January 15th, protruding gate latch that has injured a player, congestion near the fence, and unusable cowl system due for placement, and lack of lighting near bathrooms. We've actually proposed solutions for every single one of these issues, even offering to address and fix them with our cells, yet every suggestion has been ignored. What now? How do we get on the agenda to address these unfair and unreasonable policies? How do we ensure rules are applied evenly, not only when it's convenient for the city? And how do we move forward together instead of being repeatedly ghosted? We're here because we genuinely care, I think you probably know that by now, for the pickleball community, the love of the game, not just for the fun of playing, but for the fairness, safety, and strong sense of community it fosters.
Doran, could you wrap that up?
Yep. Our request, we ask that you commit to reviewing and revising policies in a way that serves everyone, not just the city's convenience. Fulfill your role as elected representatives by engaging with residents, listening to concerns, and working towards solutions. We ask that you join us in fixing these issues. Please.
Chuck, pleasure.
Thank you. We feel like from the get-go, we made it crystal clear, I know there's a lot of the council members here, from the get-go, we made it clear that we just want to play pickleball as we, we fought as hard as we could to get the course up originally temporary for five years become permanent with the help of everybody, but we have them permanent. Then we get to turn around and fight for free play, which was something that the city had given us with the temporary course, but since they became permanent, they want to take that away from us. And now here again, now we have to fight the play. And I find that so frustrating. I live in this community. I love this community. I believe in this community with all my heart, but for the fact that we have to come here every time there's a council meeting to stand up and fight for something that we believe in and nobody's even, nobody cares. And, you know, I know nobody's a big word, but nobody's responding to us and we don't know how to get this on the agenda. We want these rules that were made that were so ridiculous, we want to change. It's not about our suspension anymore. We could care less, but we just want someone to pay attention. When we share this with outside communities, they're like, we would never do that. It makes no sense to me that people who don't play pickleball wrote the rules. We're just asking for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Paul, are we?
I'm not very sure I understand.
Well?
The density part, I thought you were going to talk about it a bit.
We are. We're not to that point in the agenda yet, so there will be another open period when we get to that, to the issue that I think you want to address. This is just a general public.
That would be where I would like to speak.
Okay.
You've got nothing to say about pickleball?
Tell us what you like and share.
It sounds delicious.
Delicious.
Have you tried it?
No, I haven't. It's very delicious.
I've been living there for 56 years and I know a little bit about pickleball. I can't play it. I've got a client that is interested in putting in pickleball courts on an inside building, air conditioned. And their opinion is that Maitland is lax for them. And an easy example is looking at Winter Park, Mexico. They have a different set of rules. They invite you to come play. Open play is fine. The way Maitland is good doing it with the rules would have us spend more time and money to monitor it than it's ever worked. Why you would even have rules like this? I don't know of dumbass that wrote these things, but it just makes no sense. You'll pay attention to several people, I think he mentions 18, she did. Just go to Winter Park. The manager over there, they would gladly come talk to us, but watch what other people are doing, learn how people play the game, and let people share, because it's a short play, you know, sat at for two hours. If I get seated for two hours and I leave, I get tired and leave, you all write down no show. It's rules like that that make some sense. Just try playing the game, watch people play the game, talk to people play the game. So talk to City of Winter Park. Let, I won't be doing the hard question like Maitland. Please pay attention to what these people are trying to do and get somebody to talk to them.
Okay, thank you, Black Chip. All right, we have Don Burney. Dan, sorry.
Yeah, I'm Dan Burgundy.
All right. Yeah, I'm Dan Burgundy. Yeah, I just supported the pickleball community here and I played a few times and I just, my understanding of the rules that are being enforced out there don't seem to make sense. And I just wanted that you guys to hear, get from more of the community is, you know, I won't use some of the colorful languages, gentlemen, you can't. But the idea would be, it seems as though if you come up, I don't know, if you take the rules from other areas and say what would make sense and keep them consistent, because they don't seem to make sense and maybe there's confusion, I'm not sure. My understanding of how the rules are being enforced doesn't make sense. And that's all, yeah. Hope you guys can straighten that out. Okay, thank you, Burgundy. Is there anybody else for the public period? Okay, well, just, I don't want to get into a back and forth on that, this is not the forum for this, but I do want to say a couple things since you all have raised a pickleball issue several times. One of the points I would make is that I think that the city has been responsive. I think all of us probably have talked to you, I know that I have spent some time talking to you and understand the problems. And I know that our parks votes and our city manager and others have spent time talking to you, so I don't want everybody to leave here with the impression that there is no contact back and forth, because I don't think that's an accurate description. The other thing is, I think the basic disconnect is that, you know, we adopted a kind of a two-pronged approach to pickleball, and that is several nights of the week there are open play. So that it was free to come out to open play. Other nights are reserved, so that you can go out and reserve a court, you can tip your court and have that without having to be, you know, circulated around. And, you know, some people prefer one, some people prefer the other. We decided for that reason, but also for the reasons of tight parking and other particular site issues to do it that way. So we have a reserve system and other places. And the problems arose in the reserve system. And my sense is that, you know, there were, people were feeling that the reserve system was being gamed, as it were, and trying to be turned into open play. So, you know, I think if we can keep those two things distinct, I think that's fine. I mean, I, that's, but I, that's my understanding of, I was here, so I voted on it, so I know exactly what I was thinking, was to have a reserve nights and open play nights. And also, I'd like to also clarify, you know, I think in this legislature, resolve your particular situation, although you have a suspension, you can play pickleball every day of the week in Maitland. You can play on this course every single day of the week. There is the, there is?
We're suspended, we can't?
No, you're suspended from making a reservation. Somebody makes a reservation for you, you can come and play with them. And you can play open play all year. That's my understanding.
Well, that's not ours. We were shut down.
Well, you play, you play open play? Yes, you play open play.
But here's what's interesting.
We're getting back and forth, and this is not the forum.
You're for 96 hours, 96 hours of play, and we get 10 and a half hours of free play?
Okay, well, so if that's the question, really, the question is?
It's where's the fairness?
The fairness is we have two systems, a reserve system and an open play system. You can't deal with that. You can't deal with that. So, and that's all, that's why I said I want you to go back and forth.
You're saying we can play as long as we don't make the reservation? That?
That's my understanding. I don't know, I'm not making the rules on the administration of it, but that's, that's my understanding.
The rules are absurd, that's why we want to change this.
All right. Well, I do think that the city staff and the city council has put in some effort to understand the position of the matter, but, you know, I don't appreciate being characterized as some of you is either, you know, not interested in hearing what people have to say or not interested in solving the problems, because I think that's all we're all of.
Less than 2% of the messages have been responded.
So I've got my three minutes, so I'll go ahead and do three minutes. We have to move on with the meeting. Thank you. Let's go to decisions in this light. First reading and transmittal of ordinance number 1444, the city Maitland CDP Plan Evaluation Fraser Report. Lori, would you please read the document?
Order number 1444, in accordance with the city of Maitland, Florida, amending the Maitland Competence of Development Plan 2035 pursuant to Florida statutes, chapter 163, providing for adoption of the city of Maitland 2050 CDP, amending elements, tables, maps, exhibits, and figures contained within the CDP, providing for repeal of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, providing for conflicts, severability, and ineffective
Okay. Mark, would you like to introduce the agenda?
Yes, sir. Just to start off, a little background information on why we're here tonight. Under chapter 163, part two of the Florida statutes, cities and counties are required to have long-range development plans, which are called comprehensive plans. In our case, we call it the CDP, the comprehensive development plan. Those plans are put together based upon Florida Administrative Rule Number 9J5. Anybody in the planning community is very familiar with that, just like the bible of planning in Florida. And that's what our comprehensive plan is based upon. It tells you everything you have to include in your comprehensive plan to get it adopted by the state. This includes land use issues, transportation, water, portable water, wastewater, stormwater, parks, conservation. We have to coordinate with other municipalities and counties through interlocal agreements, so that has to be documented and addressed in the comprehensive plan. We're also required to coordinate with the school board for school capacity, which is included in the comprehensive plan. What this plan does is establish long-term goals, objectives, and policies to guide our city over the next 10 to 20 years. This is, we're required to take a look back at it periodically to make sure everything's up to date, to make sure our population projections are where they are and that the policies that are in place are consistent with the current policies of the city. As I've told you before, the comprehensive development plan sort of acts as the constitution, the land use constitution of the city, so it establishes the broader goals of what we're trying to accomplish from a land use and development standpoint. Then you implement that through your laws, through your code of ordinances and your land development code. That tells you how you implement the comprehensive plan. So that's why we're here tonight. And every local government is required at least once every seven years, and we're in that seven-year cycle, to evaluate their comprehensive development plan to reflect changes in state requirements and changes in local conditions. So we are at that seven-year mark. We've notified the state that we are amending the comp plan and what we are planning to take a look at. We did bring on a consultant, Kinley Horn, who did our last comprehensive plan. They're familiar with our policies and the direction of the city. What they did was identify 74 different changes to the Florida statutes since we adopted this seven years ago, and then we all took a look at the relevancy of those changes to our comprehensive development plan. Not every one of those 74 changes applied to us. Sometimes we made changes along the way because we were required to by the statutes. There are optional elements within the comprehensive plan that we have not exercised our ability to adopt, so changes to those didn't apply to us. So of the 74 changes, we just, we filtered out what would apply to us and what those changes are and how they would affect our comprehensive development plan. So as far as background, back in March of 2019, the city council adopted our comprehensive development plan and replaced our old CDP. The current, and when we were going through that process, there were a number of developments happening in downtown areas specifically. Maitland City Center was going up, 400 North was going up, and the Parker was also going up all at the same time. So there were concerns raised by the residents of what our densities and intensities were in the downtown area. So what the city council did at that time was took a look at our densities and said, perhaps we can throttle down our densities a little bit, and then allowed developers to buy back density through a program called DICE. So we took our existing densities, which our maximum was at 67 units per acre at the time, and then we brought those down a little bit based upon the acreage, which I'll get into in just a second, and then implemented the DICE program, which allows a developer to provide some alternate alternatives for community enhancements, DICE's development incentives for community incentives to buy back some density. So if the developer would say buy a park for the city or pay for major park improvements, build a regional stormwater pond, you would be able to get some additional density for that. Sort of going hand in glove with this is over the last 25 years, the density in our downtown core is based upon parcel size or accumulated contiguous parcel size. So smaller parcels got less density, so at the smaller parcels, less than a half unit per acre, you were dealing with 19 units per acre to on the top side, if you go over three acres, you're looking at potentially 67 units per acre. Had the same, similar, a similar system as the DICE program, it was just a bonus system where we had sort of pick lists of things that you could provide as part of your development to add up, add your density in. So there was incentive to pull properties together, and that has created a little bit of a problem. But I want to go back to the DICE program a little bit to walk you through how the DICE program works. Under current statutes and case law, if you were going to propose something that's going to improve the community and provide a density to improve the community and provide a density enhancement for your project, the way the process works is they would come to the city council, the developer would come to the city council in a pre-application format with a proposal. For example, they would want to donate a park. They would show what the value of that park donation would be, and then what the value of the increased density would be for their development. Those things have to be basically equal. So they would have to do a study to show what the value is, and then how that value accumulated into density for their project, and how those would be roughly proportional in value to allow for that to move forward. The challenge that the development community had is that they were doing this upfront, and as a city council, you're not allowed to give an approval upfront for something like this. There's a, there's a process that you have to go through, goes through staff, it goes through public hearings at Planning and Zoning Commission, then it comes back for public hearings at the city council. So you have to provide, you have to take that public input and then make your decision based upon the input that's provided. So the fact that the developer was providing that, that study for you upfront, it didn't allow the city council to say, yes, move forward with this, and if you get to the end, we'll approve it. You couldn't give the head nod to them that they're on the right track. You had to just let it move through the process. So the feedback that we received through the, from the development community is that the DICE program was unpredictable, because they wouldn't know how they would end up, because they would go through a negotiation with, they would start with you, go through a negotiation with staff on what the incentive would be for the additional density, go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, have an additional negotiation at the Planning and Zoning Commission with the public involved, and then come back to the city council, again, negotiating again on what that would be. So their concern was that they would be shooting for a moving target through the entire process, where they'd have to then justify what those costs are and whether there was that, that balance between the density incentive and the density that was being provided to them. So it was an expensive process, so for the last six years, we have had no one take advantage of the DICE program. We haven't had any realistic redevelopment within the downtown area. What we find now from a, from a property owner's standpoint, as we're talking to property owners that are looking to develop their property, is in order to get to that three-acre piece, to get the max, three-acre size, to get the potential for the maximum density, it's sort of a buyer's market. If you have two half-acre parcels or two acre and a half parcels next to each other, they both want to buy each other. They don't want to give up that advantage to the other, and so there's been some stagnation in the downtown area. Just to give you an idea of what we're talking about here, this is the, the land use map for the city. The yellow areas here are your single-family areas, which is the predominant area of the city. On the west side, we have our Employment Center District, which is our primarily office district. And then right down the middle here, you have our downtown district, and that's what we're talking about here with these potential amendments to the comp plan, our downtown core district. If you'd like to look at the breakdown of how much property we're talking about, you can see our traditional neighborhood, which is our single-family districts around Lake Seville, Lake Catherine, the Dahmerk area is the vast majority of the city, with conservation and open space lands taking up another bit of that, that's all, that's publicly owned land. Our Employment Center takes almost a quarter of the acreage of the city. With our new neighborhood district, which are the transition districts at the edges of the traditional neighborhood, and our non-residential districts taking up a small piece, and then the Main Street District is about 10% of the city. So we're not talking about a big piece of the city, but we are talking about a critical piece of the city when it comes to downtown redevelopment. The Main Street District, the entire CRA falls within that Main Street District, so the improvements that can be made through CRA funding are funded by the tax dollars that are generated in that district. So this comes down to sort of what do we know now? We don't know if for the last 25 years, the city has granted higher densities for larger parcels or contiguous, continuously assembled parcels. But to achieve those maximum densities, the developer would have to get to that three-acre threshold. Since 2019, no applicant has chosen to use that process to try to get to additional density, and that's on any acreage of parcel, not just the three acres, because DICE is allowed for any parcel in the downtown area. And the applicants, as I mentioned, are finding it difficult to assemble within the Main Street District because it is a buyer's market. Everybody's trying to get to that larger piece. They're unable to develop financially because of the reduced densities on their medium and smaller sized pieces. And then there's the, the issue of the Live Local Act, which we've talked extensively about over the last two years. And just as a reminder for the public, the city, the legislature two years ago adopted the Live Local Act in response to a deficit of affordable housing in the state of Florida. And so what they have provided is some state incentives and financial incentives from the state to develop affordable housing, focusing on those below the 120% median income, with significant incentives provided for those from below 80% of the median income, and then some other incentives for the sort of what they call the missing middle, which is that 80 to 120% of the median income. What that means to us, from a statutory standpoint, is as they adopted this, some of the incentives they provided were not only, did you have a question, Steve? Some of the, some of the incentives that they offered were not just financial incentives, although if someone would build a live local project in the city and it provided housing for those less than 80% of median income, they would be exempt from ad liborum taxes. If they were providing for the missing, missing middle, between 80 and 120%, based upon the rules that are set up in the statute, they would be eligible for a 75% reduction in their ad liborum taxes. And we felt the bite of that last budget year, when we had two live local projects come through that hit our budget for about a million dollars, which forced us to postpone our capital projects for last year, extend our capital plan out several years, and just focus on operations and maintenance, and use money that is carried forward from the previous year budget to get some streets paved and some sidewalks fixed. So it had a definite effect on us as a city. The second part of that is that if someone comes in for a live local project, they are not required to go through any public review process. They are allowed to, they are required only go through a staff review process. So we take in their project, we apply our zoning codes, but they're allowed to get the maximum densities and maximum intensities of the land use that are provided in the city for anyone in the city. They're allowed to get the maximum height within one mile, wherever their project might be. So all this happens outside of the public process. We were just required to make sure they meet our zoning requirements and provide the approvals, and for that benefit, we also, we get to provide services to them, basically free of charge. So the existing taxpayers of Maitland will provide the funding for the services for these live local projects. So what, in response to all of these things that are happening in the downtown area, what we've talked about the city council on a couple of occasions was how to address this, how to spur redevelopment in the downtown area, but also how to shield ourselves from live local projects. So three conclusions, directives were received from the, from our council discussions. First of all, that DICE was ineffective and actually discouraging downtown redevelopment, so we were asked to eliminate the DICE program. Also, to eliminate the policy of density and intensity based upon parcel size in the Main Street District, because a lot of what development occurs on an individual parcel is based upon the parcel size. So if you have a 67 units per acre on a quarter acre lot, you're not going to be able to fit 17 units on that quarter acre lot. You have setbacks to have to apply in our zoning code, and buffers, and stormwater retention requirements. So the, the direction we had is let the lot dictate the development and eliminate that density based upon parcel size. And the last was that the density, yeah, the right, the by right density was too low, because we had variation from 19 units per acre up to 67 units per acre. So if we just provide that maximum density throughout the downtown core, that redevelopment would occur, and it would also discourage people, at least shield people, and that's the term, shield us, from people wanting to use the Live Local Act, because they could get a market-based unit using the higher densities. So that's what is presented within this comprehensive plan update. So any questions on that before I jump into mobility? Because that's kind of the, a lot of the updates we made were just updates based upon statutory requirements, and then some cleanup work, as you saw, there's a lot of cleanup work that took place there, a lot of references to studies that have been updated that we took care of. But the focus on our amendments were in the land use element, and then the changes, I'm going to go over in mobility here, but I wanted to answer any questions on land use, since land use and mobility are going to be two very different things, so.
Okay. I have a question about the land use, the density, actually the FAR. So I've got a problem with the, doing away with the acreage, you know, calculation. And if we go back to, I'm looking at table 1.1.15.
Pull that up here.
My other question to this thing is, is how do we get to suggested FAR 3.0 rather than the 2.0 available to everybody with the parcel?
Let me, let me pull that up. Was that the maximum was? I have it right here. Which table are you looking at, sir?
One, but it's been.
It's been renumbered for this.
Right, this is the strike number.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
So just strike out table 1.1.1.15.
Page 60, 164.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm looking at the actual, but that's probably the same table.
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit different between the agenda and the actual document.
Yeah, I'm looking at the actual.
Okay, that puts me into the housing moment for speed. Bear with me for a moment.
I have a problem with pretty arcane questions. I'm trying to take a turn here.
Yeah. Okay. I'm getting close. You were on table 1.1?
1.15, which is now just straight through all the way up, pretty short, strike number.
Well, okay, when we.
So, but the strikeout is within what is currently on the books.
Yes, yes. So we went to three, we went to the FAR 3.0 to establish that, the density and the intensity, because the floor area ratio is basically the building coverage, it will dictate your height. So we bumped that up, because at a four-point area, FAR of 2.4, our concern was that you wouldn't be able to achieve the maximum densities, so you would still happen to be able to go to live local and get the maximum, maximum density for that. So.
Okay, the way, it looks to me like, what we have currently on the books, and we came to it before, was this, if you had three plus acres, you would have gotten a 2.0 FAR in 40 dwell units to the acre. And at three acres, you could have gone up to 2.4, and you could have gone up to 67 units per acre with that. So I wondered why we wouldn't just go up to 2.4, like we just are going to go up to 67?
We could. This is, these are policy decisions, so we are just trying to err on the side of caution. So it's really at the discretion of the city council, I think. You know, 2.4 is still a pretty, a pretty high FAR.
Okay. And what would the, the height of that be? Do you have any idea?
Six stories.
Six, it's 2.0?
Six stories is maximum height.
Oh, okay, just. And that's, that's not here, that's in our.
Land development code.
Land development code. Okay, that was, I was worried how we got, I can understand logically how you got to 67 units per acre with no DICE, but I didn't see how you would have gotten to three, jumping past the 2.4. Okay, that was my question.
This is maybe a night, what is 67 units per acre looking like?
Right across the street.
The Parker, right across the street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's 67.
This is 67? I thought it was up into the.
No.
Seventy?
No, that is 67.
Okay. So yeah, so that, that's kind of right. And do you know the FAR on that?
I do not know the FAR on that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just imagining this, going out this way, going out that way.
Yeah.
Looking at something similar.
We got, what you have to remember, it's all based upon parcel size, and that's sort of the key component, is like I, like I said, if you have a half acre parcel, like one of the parcels on the, on the north side, take Floyd's, at less than a half an acre, at 67 units per acre, you're still going to get two or three units on that. You still have to park it, you have to provide stormwater retention, you have to find buffers and landscaping, so you don't, you don't get 67 units on every parcel, it's because it's based upon the acreage of the parcels. The smaller parcels have smaller projects, larger projects have, larger parcels have larger projects. And the breakdown of parcels in the downtown area, I think we only have eight that are three acres or over, seven or eight that are three acres or older, and some of those are publicly owned parcels. The vast majority, 80% of our parcels, are under two acres, with the majority of those being on the, on the smaller end. So you end up with a mix of development styles and types, depending on how that, how your parcel size breaks out.
So you had said earlier about the incentives to developers to combine with this, incentivize the preference to sort of acquire a larger.
No, this actually removes the requirement, it allows them to develop on the property they own, and doesn't require them to buy their neighbor.
Anyone else?
Okay. Jump to mobility. And I just wanted to point this out, this was one of the bigger changes in the code, and this is based upon FDOT's transition from a more rudimentary form of level of service to a little more enlightened form of level of service. So we are required to have a bicycle and pedestrian level of service standard in our comp plan. What DOT has done is they transferred from level of service to level of traffic stress to assess the perceived comfort of how someone feels while walking or biking on the road. So this increases the focus, sort of like what Melissa was talking about earlier, focuses on, on how you feel and how you develop along roadway. So children and the elderly are going to have a different feel on a roadway than, say, any of us would walking along a street. So someone that's on a training wheels, or a mother in a stroller has a different level of comfort than someone riding the bike down a bike lane that's a seasoned biker. So from, when you talk about traffic levels of stress, it recognizes that there are different users, different tolerances, and tries to quantify that, helps identify areas needing improvement. Helps identify areas needing improvement. So if you, to the next, I'll get to that in the next graphic. We've already done a little bit of that with our high-intentspeed accent network where we identify Maitland Avenue and Maitland Boulevard as our areas that are the most untended for motorized traffic, which then makes them, I'd say, for non-motorized traffic. It's also a user-oriented standard, and so DOT is now using this to replace the level of service. So what we've done is taken their tables and then just included them into our comp plan. I know this slide's a little hard to read, so I'll walk you through it just a little bit. From a bicycle standpoint, your low-stress tolerances are on this end, and so that's the level that most children would feel comfortable riding a bike on. These examples would be some of the streets in the residential areas in Dahmerick, and for example, like Thistle Lane where you have a grade-separated bike trail where it's very safe, very comfortable for the children to get to Maitland, Middle and Dahmerick. Those types of roads would have the LTS of one. And as you move across the spectrum, get into the higher levels where you have a biker that is more comfortable, has the right equipment to say ride down a Horatio Avenue in the bike lane, then those come to the level of stress four, where it's a very limited number of people that will, will do that, that they will do it. It's sort of like the example on Sandspur. Before we put the bike trail in there, we had a bike lane on Sandspur that a lot of people weren't comfortable riding in based upon the narrowness of the lanes, the medians, and the volume of traffic there. So a lot of people didn't ride on Sandspur until we put that bike trail in. So those are types of roads, it would be the, the LTS four where it's uncomfortable or if people are just forced to ride on them because there's no other alternative. From a pedestrian standpoint, you have your low-stress tolerances here on the left, here again, where you have people with potential disabilities or in wheeled vehicles that would feel very comfortable on, again, using the example of Thistle Lane or the Mohican Connection where you have a lot of separation between a road and the sidewalk, or again, the residential streets that have sidewalks on them, especially in newer areas where the level of comfort's very high for children, elderly or people with disabilities to, to walk on the, within the, within the rights of way on the sidewalks. As you move up, you get higher levels of stress. I can use the same example in Dahmerick on the streets that don't have sidewalks where people walk in the street. People are less comfortable with that, and we received that info when we did the speed and cut-through study in Dahmerick. We talked about that a lot around Lake Civilia where it's more comfortable to walk on the portions of North Lake Civilia that have sidewalks versus South Lake Civilia where you're forced to walk in the road. Then you get up to the, your, your high-stress tolerance roads, which, you know, portions of Maitland Avenue could probably fit in that category, certainly Horatio where you have sidewalks close to the, the travel lanes and some of the sidewalks are in disrepair. So, so these are the standards that we are required to adopt because they're the new DOT standards. So you take a look at the mobility element, you'll see those old tables struck through and these new tables inserted. And so as we move forward, as we're reviewing development or we're doing redevelopment in the downtown area, we'll be using these standards to make the roads more comfortable for pedestrians. So just wanted to touch on that. So are there any questions on our new standard there?
So I guess my interpretation of this is, the level of standard was always focused on movement of cars and vehicles through your communities, making sure your roadways were wide enough and adequate enough to move traffic through like 1792 even Horatio.
Yes.
So the moving from a car-centric measurement to now pedestrian bicycle user measurement. How does that relate to the cars now?
It's more of that interaction between the cars and the pedestrians, how they, how they interact together. There's, we're a, we're a mobility community, so we don't even recognize level of service anymore. We adopted our mobility plan about 10 years ago, so when people develop, when developers develop in the city, they pay into our mobility fund that pays for mobility improvements, bicycle sidewalk, mass transit, alternate modes of transportation, and does not fund lane miles. So we don't, we don't want additional lane miles in the city of Maitland. So we are not focused on that interaction of pedestrians and the cars and how to make the pedestrians more comfortable. And DOT has come along slowly to recognize that that's a quality of community thing and how they relate to our plans and our intent that we provide to them. They've given this alternative to allow us to, to do these improvements. And we're making these improvements, especially as it relates to the downtown area, any new improvement we've made to the downtown area, Independence Lane for example here, nice wide sidewalk separated from the travel lane, having a parallel parking buffer between the travel lane and the pedestrian, those are things we're going to be focusing on since we've chosen to invite 3,000 new residents over the last 10 years into our downtown area. We want to make it safe for them to move in and around the downtown area. Had a long answer to a short question, sorry about that, Bill.
Yeah, it seems like anyway, if you drop it to a level of service F, which is the worst, that you would slow traffic anyway, which would help their meeting of LTS1 versus 4.
And there's, and there's a lot of different ways to approach that, and the presenter for HBR touched on some of those things that we're going to be looking at. I mean, something as simple as providing street trees along a busy road that provide that buffer, provide that visual narrowing, provide that, that which then translates into cars going slower because of the side friction that's created, things as simple as that, or visual narrowing of lanes through striping to make a car, make a vehicle feel tighter on a road, things as simple as that will make the car slow down and pedestrians feel more comfortable, so.
With that said though, I thought we are now prohibited to making Maitland Avenue on a road diet, which was the intent of road diet, was to satisfy this criteria again.
Yeah, we are, we are not prohibited, we are strongly discouraged for DOT because the new rule, actually the new statute that was adopted just last year was that if you, specifically if you do a road diet on a system that connects to a DOT system, you have to get DOT's approval if it's going to adversely affect their system. And there's an entire process, if you want to do that and adversely affect their system, there's a very extensive process you have to go through just to ask DOT if it's okay. And at the kickoff of the study that we're doing right now, as we tailed off with the DOT study and moved into the MPO study, we did pose that question to DOT on how they would feel about a road diet on Maitland Avenue, and they indicated that it would be difficult to support that. So, and they are on our, they are on the team for this study too. There's a MPO or a DOT rep on the team, so they're going to be working with us as we make recommendations on these improvements.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Okay, so this has gone through staff review, it's been to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They recommended approval. The way this process works now is that if you take an action on this tonight, we transmit this to the state, to the former Department of Community Affairs, now Florida Commerce. They send that out to the departments for their state review of it. Those comments all come back to the, to Florida Commerce. They then provide those to us to make any changes that they would want to. So that gets negotiated. We decide what changes need to be made, if any, and then it comes back to you, which will be a couple of months down the line. So this isn't something that we just jump to a second reading on, next meeting or in two meetings. So it takes a couple of months for them to get that back to us. Then we'll bring it back to you with recommended changes. You can choose to take action on them or not, which will then be an adoption hearing for this. And then it gets transmitted back to the state to see what we did, if it matches up with what they did or not, and we could then enter into additional negotiations or they'll issue a letter saying they're good with it. So it's a little bit different than your normal ordinance process since it's a state-mandated planning process, so it gets treated a little bit differently. So the plant, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation is to transmit this up to Florida Commerce and adopt it on first reading, and then we move on from there. If you want any changes, now would be the time to do it, so.
Okay. Let me suggest something along those lines for a minute, but let's go to the public on this, and then maybe we can have further discussion on that. Yes, sir, Mr. Hurwitz.
Old Hurwick, 1410, Drew Land Road. I'm an architect and I've studied urban planning and what I'm missing in this conversation is anything that talks about a sense of place. You go to Bolden Park, you know where the business, CBD is, the central business district. You go to Winter Park, and they have in their comprehensive plan, they have things like that they're planning their growth through a collaborative process that protects our city's timeless scale of character. They talk about nodes, they have a different density. Everybody knows where the downtown of Winter Park is. I would be, except for the words that are on the building, it's hard to tell where downtown Maitland is. The library is over there, the park and so forth, it's all on the backside, but somehow you seem to be saying 1792 is some kind of a linear version of a downtown. I would strongly suggest that you hire a, an urban planning company who would evaluate the buildings that you've built so far under this past program, DICE and so forth, moving forward and seeing if they can establish some sort of sense with train tracks intersecting. It's very, you've got a tremendous problem here. You've got the train tracks that are dissecting what would be a CBD. You have 1792, which is heavily trafficked. It's not a place for pedestrians to walk around and enjoy the ambiance of Park Avenue or downtown Bolden Park. You know, I tried to figure out, how could I make Maitland and how could I create nodes and places? Paris has, if you go to Paris, France, they have legislation that says you have to create, you have to respect the negative space. It's called, where they have an Etoile, like around L'Arc de Triomphe, places like that. In other words, they don't just legislate for buildings, they legislate for the space that's left over. And all of these stores along 1792, this first building right next to us, they're vacant. There's no parking, it's not, it's not at all user-friendly at all. And there's a famous architect, Luc Capucier, he created a building that had its first floor on the second floor, then he gave over the first floor to the public. It was an open space. And then he built his building above it, and that's in Marseille, it's called UNE d'Apitazion. But all you have to do is take a break and take a look at what you've built so far, and maybe there's something good, maybe it's all good, maybe some are better. Maybe you want to consider, how can you bring the people downtown? If we, if I brought my relative from another city and I said, "I'll meet you downtown Maitland," and then they'd say, "Where, McDonald's? I don't know, Lily Park?" "Where do I meet you? There's no central area, there's, except for the backside of the, of this complex facing the park, but then it's got train tracks and, you know, it's, it's a, you've got a tough job to try to make any sense out of all of this nonsense." And I, you know, I couldn't really figure it out, but I'm not an urban planner. So that's my two bits.
Thank you, Mr. Hurwitz. Anybody else?
Mr. Hurwitz, I appreciate your comments, and I, you know, I think we've been struggling with this for a long, long time. We have hired architects, planners, and had all kinds of charrettes, and I mean, it is tough not to crack because we have 1792 and we have railroad tracks. And we have a lot of thoughts been going into this, and I guess, you know, and it will continue to come into this because I think there's more potential development on either side of, you know, Portent's lane here. That's something we've been worrying, worrying about for some time, but.
But in his presentation, which was very numerical and precise, it sounded like a P and L statement. I didn't hear the warm and fuzzy kind of conversation about this is the charming kind of place with the character that we are trying to promote for a reason.
Right. Well, I think.
I didn't hear that.
Well, Mr. Regging was just, he was, he was focusing on just a couple of things we need to change to catch up to the state law on this. I think the CDP is pretty voluminous and has had a lot of that, a lot of that in there. I mean, it's, but we're not focusing on that part of it. But yes, we, we all are alert to, we all want to make it a better place to live and to, you know, enjoy, et cetera.
Since you've indulged me with this violation of all of the rules, having a dialogue, I simply would want to say, if this were to take its logical course, then we would probably see eight-story-high apartment buildings. Yeah, for, for miles on 1792. And for me, you know, it's not what I, it's not what I signed up for.
I just add to that, I thought that was part of why I always asked him about what it incentivized or disincentivized, was that disincentivized smaller.
Yes.
Or more properties with more potential for variation of style. So I'm not saying that answers all the questions of design and sense of place, but perhaps it's that the policy encourages perhaps more variation and creativity and something other than just blocks of buildings that look just like this.
Try to get a handle on what you've done so far before you go further down that road.
And allow higher density because.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hurwitz.
I'm going to be quiet now. I apologize.
That's, you know, apology necessary. We, we just put the brick wall out the window and now it's back in, in force, so we're, carry on.
Yes.
I just have to reiterate what you said, because I've been involved in this city for over three decades. And I remember when sitting in these previous chambers just north of here, and the public came out and always called this a better community. And, you know, at that time also, this community was stagnating quite a bit. We had Maitland Center that was generating quite a bit of tax dollars, but over here, we were starting to look at the pressure because that was aging, and how much are our tax dollars going to have to go up? It's not an ideal situation. When I moved here in the 80s, the first thing I noticed was the only six-lane section of 1792 was from the railroad trestle north to the trestle. And this was nothing more than a cut-through community. Years ago, the founding fathers or some of the fathers previous to us decided that Maitland Boulevard was not going to go further to the east. And that created a situation where Horatio became our cut-through. And so now, nobody, you know, people that come through Maitland aren't stopping here. They're coming from Apopka to go to, over to Ovita. They're going from Ovita over to Apopka, and we just simply are the pass-through. So, you know, it's, it's been studied to death, and I agree, I mean, we, we definitely need to have a better vision, but I think a lot of things, the transportation corridors through here have been relegated to us. And how many downtowns are, you know, not even a quarter mile wide? So that's the toughest part, is how do we back up and correct this? And I think that's the toughest part. I think this is maybe a mechanism is to. I think this is maybe a mechanism to disincentive for higher densities, and allow people to develop some things on smaller parcels that make sense for them. But it has to make sense, too. We all know this is a nickel-and-dime game. I mean, people don't buy property, invest in these things to lose money. We all could get together, we could create a REIT, invest in some of these properties that keep us making, you know. But the people that are investing in respect of returns, and we have to at least give them a, a, an opportunity to do that in our downtown. But I think this is at least, I know it's a numbers game per se, these are updates to the state, to bring our CDP in compliance with what new current thought processes are. If we can modify it, and again, send by smaller parcels to develop without the intensity, then I think that's, that's a positive direction.
Well, one of my concerns is that, you know, we're, we are setting the density limit here, you know, the, the main numbers are the par and the, and the dwelling unit per acre. And I'm not sure, maybe you all have had enough time, I know you all are, maybe on council, and, you know, this is a, this is a pretty big moment, I think, to set the density. And I don't know that you all have had the time to go through and familiarize yourself with, you know, what, you know, your, your question, Mr. Shanning, was a good one, it's like, well, what does 67 look like? You know what I mean? And that, that's, it's the eternal question, we all ask that question, we keep asking ourselves that question. It can look a lot different, but that's, that's one iteration of it. You know, I don't know, if you all, correct me if I'm wrong, but do you feel like you've had enough time to digest this? Now I'll give you just a short history, and Mark has given you a little bit of history of it. When we, you know, there's always resistance to multifamily housing, in Maitland in particular, because it's just, it was kind of a alien concept. You know, when we were at 19.8 units per acre, you know, when we were building this back in 2003, 19.8 units per acre across the board, and it was just nobody, that, that's why everything, everything was kind of drifting away, kind of rotting out there. Nobody could develop it, nobody could turn it into a, or anything like that. And so, you know, it was, things were looking pretty run-down at the time, for a long time, and that's why we created the CRA. And then also adjusted to 19.8 million units per acre, significantly higher. Over, you know, it wasn't all in one fell swoop, but it happened incrementally. And then we ended up with, like, Holy Village, it was the first to go around, you know, down here in the corner of Lake Avenue and 1792, and that, that was a difficult decision. And it, but it kind of gave people an understanding of what we're dealing with now, because it used to be a furniture store down there, 700, you know, nice boats and everything, people felt, it creates such a space, even though nobody was under there. And all of a sudden, you have four or five stories of apartments, and people were, some people don't care, some people are fine with it, some people are offended by it. But it does generate lots of emotion, and, and then, you know, we kind of continued developing. We have a city center here now, which I was a proponent of, because I think the way we dealt with it was to not just allow somebody, you know, you know, just to, here's your 67 inch per acre, do what you want. It was kind of negotiated with PD, and what we got for our side, for Maitland, I mean, other than, you know, some, some new residents, wasn't we required them to turn all their restaurants and furniture onto Independence Lane, in the attempt to make Independence Lane kind of the downtown of them? Which, you know, it was, it was a difficult negotiation with the developer, because they, you know, they could see no purpose to putting businesses with their back to 1792, and their signage on 1792, because, you know, all businesses that won't lease out want, you know, to, to face 80,000 cars a day, and it was hard for some people to come on in, but we didn't miss them otherwise. So, we built a nice park here, which also would have been a, I think it's already called three-story medical office building, well, it would have been a medical office building wrapping parking garage, where our current city park is, but we prevailed on that one. So I think we kind of created a nice little area here that was not here before. But anyway, back to my story, I mean, you know, we went up to 67 units per acre, got Maitland City Center, I was a proponent, a lot of people don't like it. They couldn't see the sun any longer, and it blotted out the sun, and, you know, but all in all, I think it has been a benefit to our city. That said, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be replicated on the most of our good sites, or on, you know, the interior points, Scott, you know, all down the road. So, I think some thought has to be put into, you know, what is the correct density that we will allow? We're not going to be able to negotiate, I don't believe, PD's any longer on something like this, but maybe there's something they'll come up with, PD and explore, and we can have negotiated all that. But before we set the, I'm having a sprig wandering up, after that came in, the city council went from 67 units per acre down to 40 units per acre, so because we felt like that was perhaps too much, or we don't want to see it necessarily next door again. Again, maybe there was fine with that one, it's one-off, but we, we dialed it back to 40 units per acre, with the ability, through the DICE program, to get up to 67 units per acre. And, you know, the trade-off would be that the city would be benefited by that, because we would get, you know, the, you know, the stormwater, you know, facilities and whatever else, you know, park amenities and other things, in return for higher density. So, DICE program hasn't worked out like we thought it would, so I'm not convinced right now that we need to just, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with getting rid of DICE, because it doesn't appear to work, and I'm fine with getting rid of the acreage distinctions as well. But I'm not sure that I'm fine with 67 units per acre as, as the right number. And, you know, I might be there, but I don't know that I'm there tonight. And I, I wonder if, if you all feel like there's, you know, do you need more time to remain on this, because, because that's what I'm turning into this? Not, I mean, your old hands are made with Maitland, I call it a, you know, newbies on this, but I mean, you know, now you're, you're in it, you're in it, you know? If you need more time, I don't think we're up against the wall here, we could table this, I would think.
I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple options, but I'll let you finish.
And you still want to do that. Or we could go ahead and, and argue about density right now, which, but the thing about that is, you're always kind of arguing in the, you know, in the absence of real, understandable, verifiable facts, you know, like, what does 67 really look like? What does 3.0 versus 2.4, you know, par look like?
That's a job.
And it's challenged, but we can do it, and we can focus on it, we can ask. So that'd be why I'm on.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think the thing that I'm looking at in my mind, too, is what that counterbalances a little of, and certainly, as the manager mentioned, that's where that number kind of came from, is where we take the incentive away for somebody to come in and do a little of, they can maximize that.
Correct.
And so, I think that's my concern, is going forward, if we set it up where it's, I guess, more appetizing to come in and get a tax exemption by doing a little oval, what's the developer going to do? And again, I mean, this is like, we don't know what's in their mind, certainly, but that's the other side of this coin that we've got to look at, is are we going to set that up that's, that's going to be the standard for people coming and go, "Well, okay, I'm going to go down to the property appraiser's office and go, 'Okay, I'm going to go to so many, you know, low-income units here, so I can avoid taxes.'" And then, again, what happens is our residents are the ones that have to pick up the bill on the services to support that unit. So, that's my only concern. And if that's truly the nature of this 67 units per acre, then I would say we have to consider that.
Anybody else have thoughts on this, or how to go forward?
Is there a precise calculation of what that sweet spot is?
No, there's not a magic number. We just know that we have 67 units per acre now, and that's by, that's a right now under the local act. So, that's the safest approach. That's, that's the way we approach it, that's the safest approach.
If we, just for conjecture, if we put it at 50, that would be the level of the limit, too, right?
Yeah. And then, then you, then you, you run into the, the issue of, when you set it low, then we're back in the position we are now, with no redevelopment taking place in a redevelopment district that's, the clock is ticking down on.
Right.
And so.
And, you know, our P and Z, our planning is only going to look at this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there are all smart people who are in the business.
Yes, they are.
So, they're, they're, seriously, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable doing what they're doing.
If we had more time, how would we use that time? Would we, would we have a workshop? Would we, would we get, be given more information to help us make that decision?
Yeah, we've had presentations before, I mean, the information is there.
There, yeah.
And I don't know that everybody here has had, you know, the opportunity to see that. You know, just like.
Not, not in the, not in the depth you have, because just your experiences led you to be through everything.
We recently saw it, it was like.
Yeah, we did, I did, well, at the strategic planning, and then when we were, when we were making the decisions on how to move forward, we had a discussion item on how to move forward, and that's what we got the direction on how to move forward. So the material's there. If you would, if you'd like me to pull that back together and bring it back, I can bring in as much or little detail as you want. We've got a lot of detail on it, on how, what these effects are, and what they can look like, and.
Right. And we do have, you know, kind of visual approximations of what, in different units, in different configurations.
And different acreages, yeah, what something, what, what it looks like on a half acre versus three-quarters versus two acres, yeah, we have some, some of those real-life examples and some visualizations.
I do remember seeing some of that, as far as.
It's a lot.
Pull it up.
It's a lot.
I wondered about your suggestion of 2.4, what that means in terms of units versus 3.4. I guess I'm not as clear on what those mean, with 2.4 versus 3.0, and you had suggested maybe using that other number because it aligned with.
Correct.
Does, is, is that where you were leaning, towards something like that, that would be lower, and would also align with some previously established standards?
Yeah.
And that converts into what, what number?
Well, I was just suggesting going with the current maximum, which is, the, the current maximum that you can get with DICE, I think it's now, is 2.4. And what staff is now suggesting is we bump that up to 3.0. And I just wondered why that suggestion was made, so I don't know.
And that's just, to make sure that we have that, that shield against lit local, that's really one of the most, the whole, the whole world changed two years ago with the legislature, unfortunately, from a local government standpoint to local control standpoint.
So, at this point, are we on a time deadline constraint to do this?
Not necessarily, and I reserve the right to correct myself, to come back, but I believe we transmitted our ear letter to Florida Commerce last September, and we have a year to do our update, so we have till September to transmit it. So, could table it, and, and we could have more discussion. There are really two options, you could table it, we could come back, have more discussion. When we're ready to advertise it, we'd have to re-advertise under the current statutes, we can't table it and then just bring it back up, so.
You could table it, sir. They get it back.
They get it back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Also.
Or we, or, no, I'm sorry.
If we, if minus one makes chapter council number three to ten.
Yeah, that's it.
Because it would be great to have this input as well.
He should be back tomorrow, I believe.
I believe so, please try.
So there's two options, we could table it now, have additional discussion, and then transmit, or we could, and this is, and we've had this discussion before, I think John, your partner, I don't know if you know who that remembers it, but you could set the high limit and come down, but you can't set it low and go up. So we've set the high limit, so we could transmit now, send it to the state, get their review, and that couple-month period while that's happening, we could have the discussions here, and then make the final decision. They're never going to gig us if we decide to come down a little bit, but we can't go off above the establishments that we, that we transmit to them. So, that would be an option, and would, that would serve a couple purposes. We would get, we'd have time to be able to go over what the actual decision is, and what that looks like on the ground. But, and, and take this how you will, but there have been people that have made investments in the downtown, that are waiting for this to happen. So if we delay a transmittal, that will ultimately delay an adoption, versus if we do transmit, we can still stay on that adoption time, but still give ourselves time to make the decision in the interim, so.
Right.
Though I think it's really the two options, or.
I don't think there's any appetite for increasing the density here at the par.
No.
I don't think there are danger of that.
No.
You know, so I'm, I'm happy with it, if you want to go ahead and transmit it, then, because I don't think there's any, nothing concerns me other than that.
Okay. And that's where most of our, most of our presentations focus on those very issues, so.
Right.
We can pull those back together, put some more detail on them, we can go back, as a discussion item, or as a workshop, at the, you know, at council's pleasure.
Right. And again, in principle, I'm fine with losing the distinction on the acreage and losing DICE.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those would be, you know, difficult to explain, if we're able to transmit it now, if it comes back to changes.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think there would be anything up here, in case there, maybe there's a concern on those implications. So, if that's the case, I mean, and if we have asked for some, have staff to kind of keep this rolling forward, I'll be in favor of transmitting, and, and in the interim, before it comes back, we give this a decision.
I would second that, and we put that forward as a motion. I will motion that we send this forward.
Does that motion include approving on first reading?
Yes. I'm sorry. I move to adopt the recommended action.
It's a second.
Okay. Laura, would you go first?
Councilmember Roundoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanning?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Mayor.
We're in transmitting mode. All right, the second ordinance tonight, we have first reading, is number 1445, regarding permitting the Land Development Code, general parking and loading area standards, et cetera. Laura, would you please read the ordinance kind of.
Ordinance 1445, it's ordinance in the city of Maitland, Florida, permitting the Land Development Code, R5, Development Standards, Section 5.2.4A, for special parking restrictions related to parking of trailers and recreational equipment providing for classification, conflicts, separability, and ineffectivity.
Okay, thank you. Mark, would you like to introduce the other?
Yes, as I, as I look at this slide, I probably have to rank this as the, one of the most ineffective PowerPoint slides that I've ever created. Fortunately, you're back, this is, this is the changed language in the ordinance, and there are certain points in time when you just run out of time, and you have to put something in a slide, and here we are, so sorry about that. Staff has identified a need to clarify the intent and implementation of standards for parking of major, as we turn to major recreational vehicles, such as boats, utility trailers, in residential areas in the city. During the drafting and adoption of the updated Land Development Code back in 2022, certain aspects of the recreational equipment parking code were reworded with the intent of providing clarity by the consultant that we were working with at the time, and some sections were omitted, which effectively changed the meaning of the code. Under the currently adopted code, a recreational vehicle can be parked in any area of the front yard without regard to setback or parking services. For the previous 20-plus years, we had very strict standards on where a recreational vehicle or boat could be parked, with the emphasis on the boat parking. It had to be parked on a hard-packed surface, and it had to be located more than 15 feet from the edge of a road. Utility trailers and other recreational vehicles had to be parked in a garage or behind the front line of the house. So historically, we have allowed recreational vehicles to be parked, boats and recreational vehicles to be parked in residential zone districts that meet the standards. So specifically, for boats weighing in excess of 200 pounds, they can be parked in all of our residential zone districts. If they're parked on a trailer, on a paved or hard-packed driveway, at least 15 feet back from the edge of the road. That's not the edge of the rideaway, that's the edge of the travel surface or roads. There's a little. So there's a little more flexibility there, that they can be located a little bit close to the travel lane. Due to some concerns that were brought up through the code enforcement process, there were some questions on what constituted a paved or hard-packed driveway. So we have included some additional language in here to further define what is allowed and what is not allowed, more specifically for the boat parking. What this amendment will do is essentially reinstate the standards that have been in place, like I said, for over 20 years in the city, with the clarification on what the surface is camming cannot be. So it's really a cleanup of something that was unintentional. We didn't actively make changes to the boat parking regulations. When we updated the, the Land Development Code, it was the drafter that took some license to attempt to clarify it, but it actually had the opposite effect. So the ordinance before you tonight puts back the language that was in the code prior to 2022 with the specifications on the types of service. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. And then, Mark, any questions in board? Okay. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments rather about the site? Okay, seeing none, it's closed, public period. Is there any further discussion? Anyone say no votes? Okay. Anybody got, I want to make a motion on this, sir.
There's your motion. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1445, amending the Land Development Code Article V Development Standards, Section 5.2.4, general parking and loading area standards on first reading.
Okay.
My second up.
And then the motion is second. Lord, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember French?
Hi.
Councilmember Anika?
Hi.
Councilmember Shady?
Hi.
Fairlance?
Hi.
Okay. All right. I think that's all of our business tonight. We have reports, city attorneys.
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Is your partner up in Alabama or where?
I think he's just up in Georgia. I'm not sure where he is, but I think he's just up in Georgia. I don't think he's hunting this guy.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, yeah, just briefly, y'all are aware that the cover of the covered bridge park has collapsed. Just as a status update, which really isn't much different than the last time I talked to. Everybody, as we have turned that into insurance, see if we can get that covered. But in addition to that, we have brought in our engineers on board to see what the new design would cost or what reconstruction would cost. And the decision will have to be made as we move forward to deal with that. So we're getting all the information together so you guys can make a decision at that point in the future.
Okay.
Was that uplift from the winds? Was it failure of the structure?
It was structural failure. Yeah. When the right side of the south side came out.
Kind of like what's happening in the Mayville.
All right. All right, is that it? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Time is up.
Hi, sir.
Councilmembers, I think, who are in the room or items you want to bring up? Okay, seeing none, and I'm just for the record, how about the lawyer? How'd you wear a juror?